Tuesday, September twenty eighth, we're here for the Radial College District Building Committee meeting. Call this meeting to order. Dr. Rojo. For the record, it's seven on him, his absence, Lupita Cepeda is absent, Melicuri Martinez Jr.
Present.
Porque de Galo, present. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number three, which is the approval of guaranteed maximum price for South Campus Truck Driving Pad project, Mr. Sessarella.
Good afternoon, members of the board, for the record, Sessarella, Vice President of Finance. For this Thursday's meeting, we're going to be asking the board to approve the guaranteed maximum price for the truck driving pad project at the South Campus. Included in your packet is the information submitted by Langdecker Construction. The proposed guaranteed maximum price for this project is nine hundred sixty one thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars and ninety one cents. We did have a proposed or projected budget for this project of eight hundred forty six thousand three hundred and sixty eight dollars. Currently, right now, when we add the A and E fees also to it, we will be approximately one hundred and seventy seven thousand four hundred and forty nine over our projected budget. We do have identified savings through phase three projects to address the additional amount that is needed. Now, while we worked on this guaranteed maximum price, the original proposal that came in was one million three hundred and twenty thousand fifty five dollars and seventy cents. Obviously, we have met to review the scope of the work and we have made some adjustments to the scope to bring it down to the proposed G max of nine hundred sixty one thousand eight hundred sixteen and ninety one cents. We do have a the plans here that we want to share with the committee. And I'll ask Mr. Homer Pies to come and just provide a brief overview of what the project will entail and what were some of the adjustments that were made to bring the G max down closer to the budget that we had.
Good afternoon, I'm not biased to the record, instructor manager. We do have the set of plans here for your viewing. If you have any immediate questions that you'd like to ask regarding any of the modifications that we did to the original GMP that was submitted. I'll just go down briefly down the list of some items that we that we cut back on so we could be in the budget. We did take out an allowance for landscaping and irrigation, decided to do that in-house at the time that the project is completed. We started out with a very large amount, we had a hundred thousand, we ordered to fifty, and then we took it out completely. We did have some utility construction outlined work that was going to happen. We were going to have to relocate a fire hydrant after reviewing the plans. Again, we went ahead with the with the team, went ahead and decided to go ahead and move the entrance a little bit further north to clear the fire hydrant that is currently existing along the west property line. So that was a savings of about fifty, almost fifty three thousand dollars. We took also into consideration of some items to be removed by physical plan, which was some athletic benches, some bleachers, some of the fencing on the backstop, some of the naddings that are around on the side as well. And some relocation of some trees that we were considering to relocate, went ahead and we're going to just go ahead and get rid of them, there are just a few of them. Other items. We had a proposed fence allowance also to screen the the northern and the eastern portion of the property where the pad will be sitting on. That item got removed, that was for almost a hundred fourteen thousand dollars. We also did take out a simulated dock wall that was brought in at the last minute as a suggestion to have for the for the testing purposes. That wall was removed and all of the concrete work was removed and that was in a range of about twenty eight thousand dollars in amount. Some specialty items that were considered along with that dock wall were dock seals, dock bumpers. And they also had a bike rack that we removed, that was a little shy of three thousand dollars. We also had considered some electrical work, rough in and some LED poles to light up the pad for the evening hours. At one time, at one time, reviewing the numbers, we removed the poles and the LEDs, we kept the rough in. And then after getting our second GMP for review, we went ahead and removed the electrical rough in for the project as well. That was a savings of around forty seven, almost about forty seven thousand dollars. That pretty much makes up the savings that we took into consideration. We did have two alternates, one alternate was an eighty by eighty concrete pad to park the semi trucks and get them completely off of the the new pad in case the pad were to be used for something else. At that, we went ahead and had that as an alternate, we did not include that alternate at all. And then, as I mentioned, the insulation of the lighting poles and the LED lights attached to them as an alternate number two that also got removed. So we went through several reviews. Langdecker submitted two different GMPs until we got the final third GMP. And that's the number that's being presented to you this afternoon for your review and approval at the upcoming board meeting. You have the set of plans, like I mentioned. One question that has come up a couple of times in our meetings and also I believe it's been mentioned here during boarding, it is the construction and the makeup of the concrete slab. The concrete slab was designed according to the weight of the semi trucks. So we do have thirty five hundred PSI considered on this on this construction work. The thickness of the concrete slab is eight inches in thickness. And we do have called out a number four rebar at fourteen inches on center each way, which makes up the requirement to sustain the weight of the semi trucks. So we don't have, you know, I know I've heard a couple of concern, but the engineer has taken into that into consideration during his design of the makeup of the concrete slab. Other than that, if you all have any questions, we more than that answer.
Director, organize the gentleman.
Thank you, I have several questions. Roughly, what is the size of that pad in 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 number of acres?
I don't have that exact consider an acre, but it pretty much, we do have two side by side soccer fields right now. This concrete pad is going to be placed on the practice field. And just by experience with acres, I would say probably about two and a half to three acres that it makes up square footage wise of the area of the actual new concrete pad that will be.
Do you think that is big enough, because keep in mind, we have these eighteen quaters. They they do occupy quite a bit, particularly more so where they're making a turn.
And yeah, so we do, yeah, a little bit more information on the pad, we did take into consideration some existing CDL training paths. One of them that is located in Corpus of Delmar College. Our pad is probably a little bit larger than that. So we took that into consideration for their maneuvering and different tests that are that are that are being done right now to be certified. So all that has been considered on the actual size of the pad. So the question is, is it big enough? Yes, sir, it is big enough. And it it does qualify for them to get certified for their forces.
Another question, when it comes to the concrete pad. I've been very, myself, I have some, you know, some going through some personal experience over at the my place, these doesn't make. Is is proper rebar being used that is thick enough to handle the the eighteen quater weights and and all of the activities of those eighteen quaters? Because sometimes in order to do savings, you use very, not the proper, the proper width or, you know, of of the rebar. And in my opinion, the thicker that rebar is, the better the foundation will be and and will handle the the well, all of the activity that obviously will will be that will be involved in 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 the training of those eighteen quaters and the driving, driving us.
Right, so as part of the engineering tables that are considered through a civil engineer, they do have their their tables that they go by. One, according to the use, the weight that's going to be applied to the concrete versus the thickness of the concrete, the PSI of the concrete and the size of the rebar. So all that has been taken into consideration. Yeah, the question, yeah, sometimes we find out that some of these projects that turn out to be failures because they start having shifts or cracks in concrete. Sometimes it results because, one, the rebar is too small, the rebar wasn't properly placed at the at the right height. Or the concrete came in to the site, what we call too hot, which has been sitting on the truck for too long. So I'd like to mention that we do have a material testing consultant on this project. And I'm very familiar with past experience on keeping an eye on the concrete and how long it sits out in the truck. This this pad will probably be poured through a pump because considering the size of it. So one thing that we do monitor with the testing consultant and myself is we do monitor the timeframe of a truck sitting on the curb waiting to be pulled up to be poured in.
That was going to be my next question, because I had a similar experience and I ended up hiring a an individual that was knowledgeable about it, who actually sat during the time of the pouring of the concrete and would monitor those.
The truck sitting, sitting waiting, maybe pulled up, yeah, so we keep a very close eye on that. On my past experience on where I used to work before, I would actually reject concrete trucks, they don't like it. But, you know, I I work, I work for the district, I work for the college now. And it's my responsibility to keep an eye on that and to reject concrete if it need be, it it will be rejected.
Great.
So we will keep an eye on that and we will be picking up concrete samples. The consultant will also be testing the compassion, the placement of the rebar, the tying of the rebar, the height of it. And we'll be monitoring the trucks that they come in for cylinder test that we will get results at seven days, fourteen days, twenty eight day.
Excellent.
We have all that lined up for this project.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Barks, with regards to the savings that you mentioned, those are just items that were removed from the original plans, right?
Right, so the overall, the overall scope of the of the project was to have the concrete slab there for for the CDL certified testing. Along with that, you usually get other items that come into play. So one, one of them was like the fencing around it to secure the the pad from anybody coming in during the courses that are being taken. We do have an athletic field right next door. So could ever, could it ever happen that there are two events going on at the same time, CDL classes being taught while there's a soccer game or another activity? It could happen. So there were, there were items that were added to the scope of work. And so that was our option to remove those items to be able to be within the budget. And our original budget is about two years old, so we're very, very, we have a very good number considering materials have gone up, rebar, concrete. You know, that we have to take that into consideration as well.
Were there any other quotes provided aside from Langdecker?
No, this is a CMAR, they are the contractor at risk, so they are taking care of the the bond projects that are going on right now.
And there's no way they would consider going, instead of going a hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars over our budget to settle for the amount that's budgeted? Without removing any other items?
Right now, we have pretty much cut everything off that we could.
And that's concerning, we've cut out a lot, even though we only budgeted eight hundred forty six thousand three hundred and sixty eight dollars. And my fear is that the level of work may not meet what it is that's required for our students or for the community.
Well, we didn't, we didn't cut back on what actually was left on the job or actually left on the GMP. That that's pretty much original, that's the size of the slab, the thickness, the quality of the slab, all of that is still in the curb cuts, the handicap ramps that have to be taken place into into consideration. The entrance gates, the modifications of the in and outs of the site, all that remains the same. We just took items out that were extra that did not affect the project that we have left on this year. Yeah, so we didn't, we didn't cut back on the quality at all.
Any other questions, Judge? Thank you, Mr. Barks. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number four, which is resolution to approve transfer of twenty percent annual general operating fund savings to the physical plant to cover deferred maintenance products, Mr. Sessarella.
I'll start the discussion by showing a couple of pictures that we've taken around the Fort McIntosh campus. And the request that we're we're having for this Thursday's meeting is we want to see if the board can approve a resolution to transfer twenty percent of annual general operating fund savings to the deferred maintenance project, projects fund. And the reason for that is, again, as we can see here from the pictures, we do have quite a few projects, deferred maintenance projects that we need to address. Currently, the budget that's allocated annually to the physical plant department is only five hundred thousand a year. So it makes it a little bit difficult to address some of these projects. One of the major projects right now that we're working, we have issued out a request for proposals is to address the parking lots both here at the Fort McIntosh and at the South Campus. And as you can see from the picture here, this is just one small sample of what we currently are working on, on trying to address. And this is just right by the the, this is the by the, I forgot the name of the nursing, we used to be the nursing building here at the main campus. And you can see here that again, there's a lot of work, we're already on our our parking lot areas. This is building T thirty, as you come into campus and drive to the parking lot here behind this building, you can see that it does need quite a work, mostly replacing some of the siding and some painting.
What building is that?
T thirty, the old theater.
The old one, I'm sorry?
The old theater here for the fort.
Yes.
And then when we talk about maintenance, it could be as simple as knocking down some or cutting down some dead trees, as you can see, we do have with this past winter storm, we did get quite a few of those dead trees now. We need to renew, now, now, this is one product, one of the buildings that was addressed as part of phase two, the facilities master plan, this is, this is our, these are our campus housing. And you can see there that a lot of the protective barriers that we have for the mosquitoes there are already worn out, we need to replace all those. Again, another example, you can see the siding also is already shown each year. And these are buildings that were part of phase two, and we're talking about probably seven years ago, we addressed these buildings. So again, because of their age, it's very difficult to maintain. So again, part of this money would be used to address some of these things. Here's in between the Arche Chico Hall and the Administrative Annex Building, this is actually part of a project that we're working on. And again, right now, we have not addressed this particular section because it will be part of the fiber infrastructure upgrades. So we do need to have a concrete sidewalk in that area, but we have not addressed that at that point. But I guess the major port, part of this is the Arche Chico Hall itself. This building sits in the middle of campus between remodel buildings, recently the Seattle Science Complex building. You got the Atkins building and then you got the Erie Library building. And this is an idea, a building that needs work. Again, the porch areas are actually in very bad conditions and we do need to address those porches. There's another picture and you can see here we have torn off the area, that section of the porch has actually sunk down. So we need to address that area there as well as the porches on the second floor of this building. You can see there the condition that they currently are in. One other picture of campus housing, like I mentioned, it was part of phase two. Again, we need to go in and start addressing some of this maintenance on these buildings. Again, the resolution that we're asking the board to approve, again, is that the board decides the transfer funds to the deferred maintenance fund shall be equal to twenty percent of annual general operating fund savings. The transfer shall be used to cover costs associated with deferred maintenance of facilities and equipment as approved by the Board of Trustees. And again, this, this would be projects that would be brought to the board for approval. Again, one of them being the parking lots that we're currently working on. Now, these transfers will only be made if the general operating fund balance reflects no less than twenty percent of the general operating budget expenditure for that fiscal year. If you, Judge, if you might remember, the board did approve a resolution to maintain twenty percent savings in the general operating fund balance, and that is important again because that is an item that the rating agencies, SACS, and the coordinating coordinating board look at. So again, as long as we have a fund balance of twenty percent or more, we would be able to, again, request that that transfer be made to deferred maintenance projects. And when we're talking about the transfer, like I mentioned, if we have savings for the fiscal year, only twenty percent of those savings would be going to this for maintenance.
In other words, I'm back again to this. The board officially on on a previous board meeting sometime back, under no circumstances are we to have access to the twenty percent fund balance, correct? In other words, we were, the college is will basically will always maintain a minimum of twenty percent fund balance, that correct?
That is correct, Judge.
Okay, so and that is basically one reason why, like you just acknowledged, the Radial College have been always gotten exceptional credit rating on on bonds. Because we've always been a very, always maintained a healthy fund balance that basically has an impact on the rating of the bonds. So under no circumstances you will have access to that twenty percent, correct?
That is correct, Judge, and just to give you an example right now for this, we have adopted a budget a little bit over sixty million. So we would need to maintain twelve million in the fund balance, and we already have almost three times that amount.
Right now, we have a little over thirty percent of the person.
Actually, we're closer to fifty percent, fifty percent. And 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 again, that is factoring out, again, not taking into account, that's be sixty and seventy five, which are requirements that we account for in our balance sheet. But but again, we do have close to fifty percent in the fund balance. So again, this would, whenever we have savings at the end of the fiscal year, twenty percent of those savings would be set aside for deferred maintenance projects. As long as we maintain that twenty percent that you mentioned on the general operating fund balance.
And and I I want to compliment you for addressing the the old buildings of the Fort McIntosh, because all of those are historical buildings. And it's important for us to maintain them and keep them as, you know, as they were, so to speak, because it is very much part of our history and that is. as they were, so to speak, because it is very much part of our history, and that is, I'm glad that you are addressing this.
No, and again, the folks that do the hard work is Mr. Cepeda and his staff. And again, the only thing that sometimes keeps him back from addressing some of these signs are the resources, the financial resources. And again, it is important for us to maintain these buildings, like I said, the campus housing, we addressed them, those buildings as part of the facilities master plan phase two. And there was a significant investment made by the institution to bring those buildings up to par, and I think it's a responsibility to maintain those and not let them go down to the point where we would need to go out again for another bond to address them. And again, it's, again, as we identify projects, we'll bring them to the board. Like I mentioned, one example right now of a project that we're looking at are the parking lots, specifically the ones at the South Campus, I think those are, they're needed to be refurbished. But again, as other projects come up, like roof repairs, HVAC repairs, all those could be addressed using some of these.
One of those original buildings, does it have a basement?
The one.
They're going to restore and.
One of the buildings that actually was on the pitch was the Arachica Hall, that one has a basement. Yes, and also the Administrative Annex right behind that building also has a basement.
I was aware of that, and you're going to address that issue also?
At this point right now, we, the goal to, for the Arachica Hall would be to address the porches, the porch areas. Pretty much that building is in good shape. The only thing that right now needs to be worked on are the porches, the first and second floor porches. But as far as the structure itself of the building, it's in good condition. And again, maybe some paint would be nice, being that it is right next to recently remodeled buildings. So, but again, right now, priority, right now, we have the parking lots that we're working on. Like I said, as we go down the list, we'll bring those projects to the board for approval.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Char.
Thank you very much, Mr. Char. Appreciate that. All right, and that will conclude today's Building Committee meeting. Unless there's any other questions or concerns, Judge? All right, then, this is September twelve twenty-eight, we're adjourned.
Do you want, excuse me, do you want a motion?
Oh, yes.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you. Second, all vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.